All right, we're good.
Okay, this is the meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission for Thursday, July 16th, 2020. General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I'll announce an application if a member of the public will attend the meeting. Staff will announce their attendance and admit them at this time. For items where no one from the public is attending, staff will give an overview, including any information regarding feedback from the applicant or other interested parties. I will then open the meeting for discussion by the commission members. After discussion, I will call for a vote. We'll call for a motion, a second, and then we will vote. If there is a question regarding the vote, we will do a roll call vote. After the vote, we will move to the next item. Commission members, please remember to keep your microphone on mute unless you are speaking to the meeting attendees. I'm going to call roll call. I'm Liba Latham. Bert Blackwell.
Here.
Curly Sessions.
Here.
Alan Cameron.
Here.
Matt Anderson.
Here.
Nick Amberger.
Here.
Jess Rich.
Here.
Jay Starks.
Here.
We have a quorum. I need a someone to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is 1004 Wildwood Avenue. This has been recommended that the request for a one-year extension of subdivision be approved, and that the applicant should be aware that any future extensions are not very likely to be granted.
Ms. Latham, the applicant has read over the conditions and they are in agreement.
Excellent. Then I'll make the motion that we extend it for one year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to number two, which is under new subdivision applications, 116 Myrtlewood Lane. The applicant, Mr. Orell, has requested a holdover to the August 20th meeting. Ms. Papas, does the staff have any objection to that?
No ma'am, and I have admitted him to the to the meeting. If anyone has questions.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Orell?
I do not.
I'll move that we hold over to August the 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion passes. Number three on the agenda is 5456 and 5468 Cottage Hill Road, the Conotal subdivision, re-subdivision of lots one through three. It has been recommended for tentative approval. Is Mr. Orell, he has indicated he agrees with the recommendations. Would he like to make any kind of statement, Ms. Papas?
He's in the meeting if he wants to speak.
No, I'm in agreement.
Are there any questions on that from the commissioners?
No.
No.
Okay. Somebody want to make the motion that, is there any any discussion? Ms. Papas, do you want us to vote on these as we go through them like we've been doing?
Yes ma'am, that seems to go more specifically.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure before I continue down that path. Any comments from any of the commissioners?
Chairman, I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Amberger.
So basically, are we just, we're just combining the two lots together? Is that is that kind of it in a nutshell? We're going from three lots just to two?
Correct.
And a vacated right away.
Yes, and the vacation here.
Okay.
Of the service road. And also, just 20 feet as well.
Yes, but I believe the staff report states that they need to ensure that they leave 50 feet from centerline distance from any vacated right of way.
That's number three. Recommended condition, and then it would still require completion of the vacation process as outlined in number one.
Yeah, that service road could have some infrastructure likely in it. Oh, so there's not a service road, there was just a right away for a service road, is that correct?
That is.
Right?
I'm sorry, repeat please ma'am.
I'm sorry, it was for a future service road that has never been, never been constructed?
That is correct. And the proposal, as Nick was saying, is to take three lots, combine them into two, but as part of it, they also want to vacate the service road and additional widening. This, the vacation of those rights of way would still require the approval of the city council, and that's outlined in condition number one. And then making sure that there's still a right of way in compliance with the major street plan is referenced in condition number three.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioner for comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
I've moved to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We'll move on to number four, which is 1445, 1525, and 1533 East I-65 Service Road. It has been recommended for tentative approval, and the applicant has indicated he is in agreement with the city's recommendations.
That's correct, he's also been admitted into the meeting if anyone has questions.
Are there any questions?
We're just combining the three, three car lots.
Well, we're rearranging lot lines and creating one legal lot from what is a partial right now for lot three.
Yep.
Bert, in that, I mean, well, I guess that you have individual buildings on individual lots, so there's no need for a pud?
They do have a pud that is still valid. And as you may recall, the building, the work on the site is underway right now.
Okay.
It's just subdivision approval expired, so they had to apply for that.
Any further questions from any commissioners? Or comments? Okay.
I've moved to approve a subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. We'll move on to number five, which is 916 Church Street. I understand Mr. Schumer is available for questions and comments, and the staff has recommended that it be held over until the August 20th meeting to allow the applicant an opportunity to address the city's concerns.
Correct, of all counts.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Schumer?
No, I'm here, can you hear me? Can you see me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize it defaulted to mute. This is, I'm not super experienced with the Zoom meetings. No, we agree with the holdover on this one. I could have replied to the email, but I wasn't accustomed. As when I got the thing that everybody had replied, I realized I could have.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we hold it over to August 20th.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? That motion passes. We'll move on to group applications now. Number six, which is the south side of Tennessee Street, Oakdale subdivision. Mr. Burris indicated he is in agreement with the conditions for approval of the subdivision and the rezoning. Do y'all want to take the subdivision and the rezoning together or separately? Ms. Papas, do you have a preference on that?
It would probably be best to take them separately.
Let's do the subdivision first. The subdivision has been recommended for tentative approval.
I've moved to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments or discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? We'll take the zoning now. The zoning is a request to go from an R2 to family residence district to B2 neighborhood business district. And that is recommended for approval. Are there any questions or comments?
Ms. Sessions, did you say something?
No, I was just getting ready to make a motion to move to approve based on staff recommendation, but I was waiting.
Okay. You can make it.
I can make it.
Yeah.
Okay, move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor of the approval of that application for rezoning?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. We'll move on to number seven, which is Atchison Place subdivision at 921 Dolphin Street and 926 Conti Street. The subdivision application will take first, it has been recommended for tentative approval.
Ms. Chairman, I want to bring a couple of things to the commission's attention. I believe Bert forwarded to all of you some concerns we had sent to us this morning from nearby, I believe they're adjacent property owners. It's from Jim and Catherine Flowers of 922 Conti Street. I need to read their comments into the record. Our residence is immediately adjacent to the Atchison property. We support the project, but have three concerns. Number one, viability of the 100-year-old live oak tree on the property line whose limbs extend almost all the way over the empty lot on our west side. Extensive paving could do irreparable damage to the root system of the live oak. Number two, we are concerned about lighting given the proximity to our property. Number three, we are concerned about the possibility of a storage building on the property line, which would put it within 11 feet of the west side of our house. We hope that these concerns will be considered before a final approval is made. For the applicant, Mr. Schumer is here to answer any questions, and then of course, the commission has questions for staff.
And we also received revised plat.
Yes, let me see if I can do that.
And this revised plat shows a requested 10-foot setback from Conti Street instead of the standard 25-foot setback. So that would alter condition number one on the subdivision regulation or subdivision recommendation, and require a waiver of section 5D9 of the subdivision regulations. This adjustment, I believe, would allow it to match the planning and development, is that correct, Schumer?
Yes, it allows the required parking to meet the parking numbers to the north of the house. There's an existing house that is just being shifted towards the street, and it lines up with the adjacent properties to the east and west. If you go back to the aerial, you can see the setback of the of the adjacent structures, east and west, so they're they're in close proximity. So it kind of matches, it's a low-volume road, but it also, it provides the room necessary to meet the parking requirements for the residential and commercial uses of the property. So that was a request we had. And I can address the other three if y'all are ready.
David, explain to us a little bit about what the project is. And we're looking at kind of a small map on our computer, so they're going to physically move a house? Yeah.
Correct.
Redevelop the existing structure into apartments or condos?
Yeah, well, the ground floor, a portion of the ground floor is going to remain the furniture store that it is right now, and the storage around to the right is going to, you know, be an accessory use part of that furniture store, and so that's going to remain in operation as a commercial use. There, it's a multi-story building, and so they're going to add 17 or 18 units. I think we had a total of 19. They they're adjusting kind of the interior space where our parking is still maintained, but they're, the upper floors of the existing structure are going to be redeveloped as like efficiency-type units, like they, like downtown has, you know, a couple of projects going on. And so that, we needed the parking on the rear is going to be primarily residential parking, and the parking in the front is going to service the residence and the furniture store.
Okay, that helps.
You know, the upper floors now, I believe, are just mostly storage. I think one of the floors is partially an office, but that's going to go, all of that is going away for the residential units.
Now, are there a bunch of other trees coming down in there? I guess where the parking lots are, I think we see the little green shading.
Those are the canopies, there's no real, there's there's the tree that was mentioned in the letter to on the east side property line, and there's some trees towards the front. But the, those are the significant live oaks, and then there's some trees in the, on the Dolphin Street side. And those aren't going to be impacted either.
But there's basically no trees coming down, I mean, effectively no trees coming down?
No significant trees, there may be some crepe myrtles and stuff like that in there, but no, no, no like historic or live oaks or large trees. I mean, most of the parking is where the house is now, and the driveway on the west side off Conti is where an existing driveway is now.
I have a question, if it's okay, it's best. What about the parking, will it be screened along the edges? Isn't, is that a requirement and some kind of fencing, low kind of fencing? I think it's three feet, would that be required here?
Yeah, I mean, all of that is part of the the buffer fence between residential is going to be provided in, you know, three feet in the building setback is the requirement.
One complaint in the letter was about lighting. Is there a, is there anticipated lighting changes that might impact the neighbor negatively?
We received approval from the Board of Adjustment a couple of years ago to use a different type of lighting in order to, you know, keep it from being the high light pole that you see in most parking lots, and it'll try to be added as like an architectural aesthetic enhancement of the site, and that will allow us to keep the light pollution from the neighbor. You know, having that flexibility from the Board of Adjustment ruling.
Well, gentlemen, I would say to that is, if the variance has not been utilized, it's expired and would need to be reapplied for.
Okay, I thought the Board of Adjustment rulings were stayed in effect.
If they haven't been utilized, if the work that it was associated with didn't occur, then it expires.
Okay, we will go back and request something like that again.
Ms. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I am, I, well, I do have one question. Ms. Papas, please got to go back and get the variance again for the lighting issue. What is y'all's position on whether we should, should we hold it over to let them accomplish that? Or?
I would.
Opinion on that?
I would suggest that a condition be added that if lighting does not comply with the zoning ordinance, that a variance must be obtained from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Because right now, you don't have a, the commission nor staff have in front of them a photometric plan, so we don't know definitively if lighting will comply or not. So if it does not, it will require a variance.
That should be on the PUD.
That is correct, that condition should be on the pud, not the sub.
Okay.
Can, can we go back to where the residents are in Common Street backing up to what appears to be their parking area? If we go to the other paperwork that you had, it shows the parking, they come in off the Dolphin, but they park, they had that right? Yeah, okay, exactly. What, what is going to be, is there something that should be part of this right now in order to make sure that that's properly screened? Since it's, you know, parking and headlights coming and going, I imagine, the active parking lot.
The standard buffer requirements would, would apply.
And they are what for downtown? I'm not, I'm not that familiar, I'm sorry.
Oh, no ma'am, the buffer requirements would not be any different here than they would be for West Mobile. It'd be a minimum six-foot wooden privacy fence.
Okay.
And that is, you can make it an additional condition, but that is automatic because the site is zoned commercially and it joins residential.
Right, right.
Property.
Ms. Papas, isn't that, isn't that parking existing on the north side?
Yes, actually it is.
And there's an existing fence there as well.
There is a fence already?
Yeah, I believe there's a fence on the, on the left side of the parking lot. On the parking lot.
But if it's, if the fence is not there or in poor condition, where it abuts the residential, they would have to put the six foot at a minimum, correct? So I have that correct?
The site is your, one of the commission members mentioned, this is existing. So if the commission wants to make sure that a privacy fence is provided between this existing parking and the residences.
Yeah, I think, I think it's that's that one section, it's not the entire section, especially if it's already existing. I'm just thinking of the part that really hits the backyards of that R1 if I'm, or I call it R1, but it's residential, so.
R1.
Right, that section, not, not the entire, I'm not looking at the entire parking lot, the others businesses and right off the Dolphin Street. I'm just thinking of their backyards. So if the fence is already there and it's in good condition, but, you know, that's my fault for not visiting the site, but I'm just saying, can we just articulate that as part of the process to ensure that they do get that screening from a parking lot, which now will be active and in use and does have headlights, and it's nice to have that separation, to ensure that separation. And that's the only section I'm concerned about.
And there is a fence there.
And it's in good condition?
Yes, it's in, it's in good condition.
Okay, but, but I think we could probably put that on just to ensure it. I'm not saying that you're, you know, not correct about it, but I just think that's important for, you know, the reuse and the activity that's now going to be coming from people coming from different hours of day. It's not a business if they're going to have residential. So those are all hours that people will come and go from their properties, from their homes.
If the fence is in bad repair and the neighbors have a problem with it, the better route for them to follow would be to call 311 so that the city could inspect the site. I don't think the planning commission should be the property maintenance commission, you know?
We're not maintaining it, we're just ensuring that it's a fence that meets the condition of the zoning, which is having a fence to separate commercial from residential.
And we, and we have the mechanism in place to do that, which is, if they don't have a problem with it, then then there's, there's not a problem.
For the, for the entire commission, I'm looking on Google Street View, and it appears there's a fence behind the residential houses that's existing. The best I can tell, looking down the driveways, there appears to be a existing six-foot wooden fence along the rear of their property.
Okay, all right, I'll drop it then, just.
Any further questions or comments? All right, we will take the subdivision application first.
Remove to approve subjects and recommendations.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Hold on. That's okay, I just want to clarify, we're waiving section BD9, and then we're allowing the reduced front setback along Conti Street as shown on the revised plat.
I thought that was in the PUD.
It also needs to be on the subdivision because the subdivision gets recorded with a setback line on it.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to include those edits as proposed by staff.
Any questions or comments on the amendment?
I'll second the amended.
All right. All in, all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the amended motion? That amended motion passes. We'll now move on to the zoning question, I mean, to the PUD, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve adopting findings of facts A through F, adding a condition with regards to the lighting, which will require them to take that matter back to the Board of Zoning and Adjustment.
Second.
Any questions or comments or discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? That motion for the PUD passes. We'll move on to number eight, which I have lost on my agenda. Give me one second here. It's 871 South Washington. And it, Mr. Schumer is available for any questions if anyone has, has them. The subdivision has been recommended for tentative approval, and the zoning has been recommended for approval. Let's take the subdivision first.
This is actually Mr. Orell, not Mr. Schumer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. I apologize for that. Mr. Orell is available for any questions or comments if anyone has any. Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve both the subdivision and the zoning.
Second. Second.
Any discussion from anyone? Okay, all in favor of approving the subdivision and the zoning?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, thank you. That motion passes, thank you. And we will move on to number nine, which is 450, 4580 Shipyard Road. Row Engineering has indicated they are in agreement with the city recommendations. The subdivision has been recommended for tentative approval, and the application to waive construction of the sidewalk is recommended for approval as well. Everybody okay with taking those two things together, or would you like to separate them out? Ms. Papas, do you have an opinion on that?
I'm fine with together, if it's the pleasure of the commission.
Okay, are there any questions or comments by the commissioners? Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion of that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes on, but the subdivision, the sidewalk waiver. Does anyone have any further business? Then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good job.
Bye-bye.